Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. This is our regular board meeting, Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building G, Bisbee, Arizona. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The order of deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A and III. We'll begin with the roll call. Supervisor of District 1.
Crosby.
District 2.
Supervisor English is present.
And District 3. Supervisor Judd is myself here representing District 3. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 993780018. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete the return, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the Board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the medium is, meeting is, agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. So we will begin with call to the public. And we have probably one person that is, has not received the memo. We're, we're trying to do something a little bit different with call to the public today. And is it time to explain that?
Yes, is Sandy Troll, is she present? Or Sandy Troll, are you online? And the, the confusion was that people were submitting speaker request forms on agenda item number two, which is a consent agenda item, and that's specifically for the receipt of the canvas and certification, not the actual canvas and certification. So I believe most people have changed to call to the public, which is more appropriate for their comments. If Ms. Troll does arrive, if you can direct her, if people know who she is, to the clerk of the Board here, then we can straighten that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll resume its call to the public. And I have the first speaker, Tabitha L. Shepherd, and it says here she is on teams. Ms. Shepherd? I don't hear her any response. Okay. This Ms. Shepherd calling one more time. Okay, the second person that has signed with to speak is Alfred E. Kern, and he's with us. As a reminder to everyone, when you approach the microphone, please announce your name and your address. Thank you.
Okay, everybody knows my name is Alfred Kern. I live at 3460 East Greenwash in Douglas, Arizona. And I'm here to speak about the grading of our roads. Uh. Am I in the wrong place? Because according to the paper that Jackie had given me, that one of the jobs a county supervisor is supposed to have is to come out and evaluate the roads. What roads can be added and what roads should be dropped. Uh, we have roads out there that have no homes on them. But the county is grading them. Why? The road I live off of, Cuyahoga Principal, had, we have 30 homes back in there. And 30 people paying taxes. And we have no services. None. Don't you think it would be advisable to stop grading the roads that don't have any homes on them? And start to grade the roads that do? Uh. And English, I think that's, that is your uh, area out here is Cuyahoga Principal. And it, you need to come out and evaluate the roads. You know, what can be dropped and what should be added? We, we, uh, like I said, we have over 30 homes back there. I've broken four springs on my truck. It's, uh. It's not rocket science, but it needs to get done. I've been coming here for 16 months. You know, can everybody hear me out, out in the audience here? Because it doesn't seem like you hear me. I don't, I, I don't know what else to say. You, you need to come out and do what the county supervisor is supposed to do. One of the things is, like I said, is to come out and evaluate the roads. Stipriano, San Mateo, Madrona, all those roads have no homes on them. But the county grades. Cuyahoga Principal, Cuyahoga Principal has.
Thank you.
And we have no service.
Okay, the next, the next speaker is Kristi Isley.
Hello, my name is Kristi Isley. I live in Miracle Valley, Arizona. And today I'm here to talk about the Miracle Valley property and that it was, the property has been declared nationally historic, which is super exciting news. And according to Statute 41862, it is now illegal to allow the property to be substantially altered, which means that asbestos abatement would be destruction, would be harmful to the property. So that's exciting news. And according also to Statute 41862, it is now illegal to demolish any of the buildings on the property. And to that same statute, it is now a requirement to ensure the property does not deteriorate significantly anymore. And so that, I would like to request that the mural in the tabernacle be covered because monsoon season is coming soon and, you know, now that it's nationally historic, it needs to be preserved. And so I just would like for you to all consider that. And we're all excited that now the property can't be demolished because it is a nationally historic site. So I just want to thank you for your time today and ask that you consider all those things.
Our next speaker is Jeff Sturgis. It does say he's on teams.
Hello, I'm Jeff Sturgis of Sierra Vista. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Any citizen and taxpayer of Cochise County who has been paying attention to the actions of supervisors Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd, along with Recorder David Stevens, must have several unanswered questions, so I'll ask some of them here. As one media observer puts it, Crosby and Judd and Recorder Stevens have been treating taxpayers' money like their own private piggy bank. They have spent more than $300,000 in effort to ram their ideas about elections through. So do these following questions not deserve replies? Why, Tom Crosby, since you have campaigned with the slogan that you are the taxpayers' champion, have you done this? You are up for election again in 2024. How can you justify what seems to anyone paying attention as blatant hypocrisy? Peggy Judd, you are now the chair of the supervisors and one of them who has challenged elections. Is that why you and Tom Crosby voted to transfer election duties to election denier Recorder David Stevens? And then voted to hire Recorder David Stevens recommended to hire? A man who seemingly lied on his job application has huge employment gaps and refused to allow contacts with former employers. How can Bob Bartelsmeyer, an elected, an election denier, be trusted to be fair when handling Cochise County elections? After stating on his Facebook page that no one can convince him that the 2020 election wasn't stolen? He has, with that statement, impugned the integrity of over 1,000 other election officials across the nation, hasn't he? Why is Bob Bartelsmeyer being paid $95,000, which is $4,500 more than the position was advertised? Why is he also getting a $12,000 relocation allowance? Why did Bob Bartelsmeyer not answer the question on the job application about where he learned about the position? Did David Stevens or someone from his office contact him to offer him the job before it was even advertised? If not, how did Mr. Bartelsmeyer learn of the job opening? Our former election director Lisa Mara has recently been awarded $130,000 from the county insurer due to her claim of a toxic workplace. Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd, how can you claim to be fiscal conservatives? How can you claim to be standing up for the taxpayers in Cochise County? How can you claim to have the county, the county's best interest in mind? Tom Crosby, Peggy Judd, David Stevens, and Bob Bartelsmeyer, will you all?
That is all the time you have. The next person is Tiffany Miller.
Good morning, I'm Tiffany Miller, 4032 South Santa Lucia Avenue. First of all, I wanted to thank all the Board for your assistance and cooperation as we've navigated this process of seeing the preservation of Miracle Valley. Secondly, I wanted to relay my concern for the current situation as it stands. The State Historic Preservation Office has declared that they find the historical significance findings for Miracle Valley to pertain to the entire property, including all of the buildings, not only the tabernacle. And that being the case, all the buildings on the property must be preserved, not demolished, and protected from further deterioration. So any additional asbestos abatement done at this moment would leave the buildings more vulnerable than during the monsoon season. Adding to that dilemma, uh, the amount of taxpayers' money needed to do further abatement is highly unlikely to be able to be recouped during a, an auction. It does seem advisable that the property be sold with the understanding that any cleanup required by the EPA be conducted by the buyer after the purchase. This would alleviate the county of any unnecessary expense and place the responsibility of protection and preservation on the shoulders of an organization which values the property for its historical contribution and has in fact committed itself to that very cause. We are very much looking forward to seeing Miracle Valley once again become a resource for the local community, as well as a landmark for those across the nation who wish to celebrate this rich heritage that we have here in Cochise County. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frances Alvarez. She is on teams or on the phone. It says phone.
Good morning. This is Frances Alvarez, Miracle Valley, Hurford, Arizona. I'm sorry, I'm not able to be present. I have been present throughout this process of Miracle Valley Bible College, and I am here to say no to any and all demolition of it. On January the 9th of 1958, Urban Line Decker said, "I give this land, compose them nearly two square miles, and be in my ranch for the perpetual use of a Bible school until Jesus comes." That was 1,280 acres. Now there only remain 70 some acres. And we're fighting to preserve that. At that time that he gave that, there was scarcely any light between Sierra Vista and Bisbee. It soon became a beacon of hope and inspiration. As Miracle Valley began to grow, the Bible college, you would top the hill from either direction and you would find its lights lit up what once had been a darkened stretch between the two towns. That beacon of hope was manifested in so many lives who bore the same darkness in their own lives. From pain, mental illness, mental anguish, even deathbed sentences. But miraculously found their way to Miracle Valley where the light of God's Holy Spirit healed their bodies, soul, and spirit. My own mama, Velma Atchison, was healed of cancer that doctors had sent her home to die. She had been to the best hospital they had around at that time in Chicago, Illinois. And the doctor sent her home, said she would die in a matter of time. But God, in His mercy, and the people of Miracle Valley began to pray in a mighty way. And He raised her up from her deathbed. She remained with us until January of 2022, a month after the celebration of her 90th birthday. Whole and healthy, she was able to raise her five children. And this is what draws so many here yet even today. God is still healing people, and I believe that it's the season, that the latter shall be greater than the beginning. This is the time that, as I spoke last time, bearness, years of bearness, life shall spring forth. The desert shall bloom again, and water shall spring out of the desert. I don't know if you can hear me or not, reading from Isaiah. I'd like to end with this. "And they that shall be of thee shall build the old waste places. Thou shall raise up the foundations of many generations, and thou shall be called the repairer of the breach, the restorer passed to dwell in." We all have loved ones that need healing, spirit, soul, or body. And I believe this is the hour, this is the day. I have vision. And we all need to have vision to believe in something or someone.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Steve Allen is our next speaker, and he is on teams.
Hello, my name is Steve Allen, spelled A-L-L-E-N. And I am 2120 East Broadway Street in Helena, Montana at the moment. I come to represent the rep.
Steve, can you adjust your microphone maybe a little bit? You're, you're not clear.
Okay, is that better?
Go ahead.
Is that better?
It sounds better so far.
Okay, I come today to represent the Miracle Valley Oasis Center organization, of which I'm a Board member. I'll make this really short for sake of time because I am on a similar Board of Counsel here in Montana where I live now, and I value your time and, and highly value what you do. I grew up in Miracle Valley for the first few years of my life. In fact, I was born in 1958, which was the first year that Miracle Valley, which is now Hurford basically, began operating as my grandfather A.A. Allen's ministry headquarters. As an organization, Miracle Valley Oasis Center is doing everything that we can to preserve the historical integrity of the land and the buildings that made up the A.A. Allen Miracle Revival's headquarters and turn it into a valuable asset to the county and to the local citizens. But from what I have read in the Arizona law and from what I've heard from my daughter Rebecca Jones, who's been way more involved in this than I have been, I am finding it very hard to understand how some of this Board of Supervisors seem to be blatantly disregarding the Arizona law, opening themselves up to lawsuits by continuing their plans to substantially alter the buildings that have been declared by the State Historical Preservation Office to be historically valuable without first consulting that office. Our attorneys are flabbergasted at what seems to be the total disregard of the Arizona statute that requires you to discontinue all demolition efforts and even alter, uh, even the alterations by asbestos abatement. I am a large-scale builder here and have been for much of my life, so I know very well the liability associated with asbestos abatement. But we as an organization are willing to take that liability off of your hands and accept it as our own. But for the land to be of value to us, it needs to be um, and its original historical buildings kept totally intact so that we can purchase them and restore them. Two buildings have already been demolished.
That's all, that's all you have.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Dr. Melvin Harter. And that one was on teams also. Melvin Harter?
Yes. Yes. Okay, yes, this is Dr. Melvin Harter. I reside in Sierra Vista, Arizona. Uh, I would like to talk to you about Miracle Valley as being a Bible college from its inception, from the time it was begun. Uh, then Frances Alvarez touched on this, and I'd like to highlight a little longer. On January the 9th, 1958, Urban Line Decker gave his entire ranch. I like to read that quote. Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello? Okay.
Proceed.
I'm being muted. I don't understand that. Uh, I'd like to give this land, compose them to two square miles, be my ranch, for the perpetual use of a Bible school until Jesus comes. He gave his ranch, it was, he gave everything he had to the Allen Ministry due to the fact that he wanted it to be used by God as a Bible school, training of ministers. I believe that God told me to go to Miracle Valley back in 1998, opened a Bible college, it was temporarily closed when its previous owners, SABC, relocated its campus to Phoenix. You will notice that our ministry was there from 1999 to the end of 2008. We, uh, we did more to refurbish the campus, remodel the buildings. The buildings that Dan mentioned that he wanted to save were actually, were the buildings that we had remodeled. Now, we had, was preparing to put a new roof on the tabernacle and remodel it at the time. Now, I wanted to say to you that, um, this should be used as a Bible school. Right at this moment, we retain 17 acres of the original Miracle Valley property. We have the two-acre cemetery that belongs to our ministry, our organization, and also 15, nearly 15 acres of the lagoon system, which is required to have for that property, uh, that's a sewer system such as that. Uh, we've retained that since 1999, auction 1999. So what I'd like to do is say that, I'd like to see this goes up on an auction. I think it should be predetermined that it should be sold as a Bible college. Uh, I don't see others mentioning any of that since, if we want to honor Urban Line Decker's words. So that's the calls I want to present to you today. I plan to come back at another time and present some other things as well. So, um, I'm just concerned about that.
Okay, that is all the time you have. Our next, our next speaker is Jennifer Druckman. It says that she's in person. Jennifer Druckman. Okay. Nope. Okay, our next speaker is Dan Le Chance.
I think that it's ironic today, on the 79th anniversary of D-Day, when a lot of Americans died for our freedom, that we didn't even take a minute to stop and think about that. And so I would ask that the chairman do that at the end of mine, or at some point. Thousands of Americans died today, 79 years ago. You must not cede your authority to the phantom JD Bod today. We must have a yes vote today by our representatives we sent to supervise the county. You must vote no today or any day when you determine to accept the results of the JD Bod canvas, the Jail District Board of Directors canvas. Why? It was illegally constituted election. You disenfranchised 11,000 voters. You suppressed voter turnout. You impeded voter turnout. You did not meet the 60% supermajority threshold required by the constitutional amendment passed in November of 2022. You did not establish chain of custody of even one ballot. You used an election system that's not certifiable to count the vote. Two-thirds of the county's districts voted majority no. I'll say that again. Two-thirds of the county's districts voted majority no. Who do you all work for? Are you representatives of the citizens who sent to, sent you to supervise the county? Or vice versa? Who do you vote for? Who do you work for? Who's paying you? You have to vote no, and you have to end this disaster against the citizens. Start again if you have to. Okay, if you want to do it again, start it again. Run a proper election. Run it all correctly. Run it all cleanly. Don't do it this way that you have done it today. The way that you have done it over the past months. You know that it's illegal and you're gonna, you've backed us into a corner. We've asked you to stop multiple times and you've chosen not to. So now we're saying stop, or we have to go farther. We have to push this into realms that you all don't want to go into. But it seems like we have no choice. And so we will, if you don't stop what you've done over these months. Thank you.
Kim Depew. Good morning, thank you. My name is Kim Depew. I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona. Our jail district establishment process exposed a problem. Republicanism is dying. The administrative state, even in Cochise County, is running the show, and we're mad about it. For example, I'm ticked off I had to vote by mail for the first time in my life. Staff should not have assumed this. The Board of Supervisors should have rejected it. Other residents point out problem after problem with elections, and you just ignore them. Your heartfelt attempt to respond last fall was met with legal warfare, rendering the whole effort moot. So I suspect you're a little bit mad too. We are a constitutional republic, and it is not illegal to question the process. Democrats objected to money spent on outside lawyers. If our county attorneys would do their Sixth Amendment duty and defend the supervisors, this would not have occurred. Or how about this? Let's stop suing each other. Run a hand count, be done with it. Last year's AG said yes. This year's Attorney General said no. Laws should not be subservient to politics. The Elections Manual clearly states that voting machines and tabulators may be used, not must be used. Republicanism means a senator from New Jersey gets the same single vote as a senator from California. One single voice of concern should be honored in this county. Additionally, we object to grants with federal strings, threatened quarantines and lockdowns. We object to vaccines and masks with mandates and a one-size-fits-all system. Grant chasing creates an ever-expanding web of rules and restrictions that oppress and make we the people mad. We object to lawyers telling us to shut up. And again, we object to being taxed as the solution to every problem. A no vote every so often would go a long way to restoring government of the people and not the bureaucrats. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Varble. And he is here. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Paul Varble. Three oh seven eight South Wind Drive, Sierra Vista. Though I agree we need a new jail, just not the way this election was done. I respectfully request that the board not certify the jail tax election results with an all mail-in ballot election. There is no way to verify the identity of the voter, nor was there any way to track the chain of custody. Lastly, there is evidence that there are many disenfranchised voters who had no opportunity to vote. It did not meet the sixty percent super majority required for the new tax. That's according to the constitutional amendment that was passed November twenty twenty-two. And I don't believe in mail-in voting. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Olmstead. I'm in Whitestone and I apologize for my squeaky voice today. Well, here we are again. A final round of trying to get you, our representatives, to actually represent us. Why do I say that? The Arizona Constitution, Article twelve, Section eight, A, Paragraph two, quote, "An officer established under Section three is to carry out the civil representation needs of the county." That's from our state constitution. So let's look up some definitions. "Representation: The act of one person standing for another so as to have the rights and obligations of those persons represented. The body of persons representing a contingency, contingency, an electoral board." So let's do a deep dive into your district, Ms. Judd, as you are my representative. Sixty-three thousand voters, I'm sorry, six thousand three hundred and seventy voters voted in your district. Of those, three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight voted against the jail tax and only three thousand twenty, three thousand two voted in favor of it. So the vote in your district was clearly against the jail tax. Out of your vote total of fifteen precincts, ten or sixty-seven percent voted against the jail tax and only five of your precincts voted in favor of it. Clearly, Ms. Judd, your district is not in favor of the jail tax. Here is my copy, my receipt of the donation that I made on Give Send Go for the Cochise County Voter Integrity Battle by Peggy Judd. My gosh, what an irony. So there was a time you were interested in election integrity. However, here we are today, yet once again, fighting for election integrity. I cannot tell you how disappointed I am in you, Ms. Judd. As my representative, as our representative, you are charged by the Arizona Constitution to represent us, your district. And yet your vote on May fifth, twenty-fifth, did not. You have an opportunity today to make a difference. Reject your previous vote. Instead, vote no today. Vote no to redo this election. Do it right as prescribed by Arizona law. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shanna L. Herrera.
Thank you. I'm Shanna Herrera. I live in Hereford. So I listened to comments a couple of meetings ago, how everybody thought the election worked exactly as it should. And you know, that's great, but what happens when it doesn't? Um, if you'd humor me with a scenario or two. So on one hand, you've got Mary. Mary's a single mother, two jobs. She hasn't voted for a while because, well, she's just been busy with life. But she hears about the jail tax election and she wants to make time to vote because that directly affects her pocketbook. So then you've got Bob. Bob, he hasn't voted in years. Well, he just, he's not into politics. Yet his wife works at the jail and comes home every day complaining about the condition of it. So he wants to vote as well, if nothing else, so he doesn't have to hear her complaining every night. Now, the thing is, Mary and Bob are both inactive on the voter rolls. So they never got a ballot in the mail. They didn't get to have a say. Now, according to our recorder, if we had in-person voting, they would have been able to get back on the active voter list and vote that very same day. But they weren't given that opportunity. So sure, you could say it was just Bob and Mary, only two votes. But the potential in this election was to have eleven thousand inactive Bob and Marys. So there's this phrase, um, voter disenfranchisement. It's been thrown around a lot, so I looked it up. The actual definition of disenfranchisement states, "The act of depriving a person of the rights or privileges of citizens, especially the right to vote." Now, if you ask me, there is no question that these two scenarios I just gave are the exact definition of voter disenfranchisement. Don't you think we owe it to Bob and Mary to look into this issue and to never, ever have an all-mail-in election again? Thank you.
Good morning. Johnny Lee Wilson, Senior. I live in Sierra Vista. I was here last week, or last time to speak and I couldn't. The hospital called. Was it the wife with other surgeries? So I had to go get her. So I went home, watched it on TV. And I remember Ann saying, it's the same old people show up all the time, basically spreading the same old lies, eleven thousand people didn't get to vote. The reason we show up all the time is because we love our county. We love our state and we love our country. And right now, it's going to hell in a handbasket. So last time I spoke, I told you it starts right here. We need to take care of things right here. And I, I remember Peggy talking about inactive voter. What's an inactive voter? Well, from what I got from what they talked on there was that they send out a, a registered letter. If it doesn't come back, they send a second registered letter and come back. Didn't come back thirty-five days, they put on the inactive list. And also in the bill in nineteen ninety-three, I can't remember the numbers of it. It said, that's what it said on that one. And then it said to mail it, things out. Every registered voter should get a mail, but only, if there's like three registered voters in one address, you only get one. It said registered voters. Didn't say inactive or active or whatever. So these inactive people should have at least got a notification of the thing. So to me, that's disenfranchised. Then they asked if it got put out in the public. And they said it did. So you ask the people over here and they said, yeah, give me a second. I'll look it up. Yes, it was put out to the public, but I don't know when. Shouldn't it say when? When it was put out to the public? And then, you know, and going back a few months ago, every time Tom tried to say something, the lawyer would say, oh, I'll jump into it. And this is the board of supervisor meeting. It's not a lawyer's or anybody else's meeting. And thank you, Tom, for voting no. I appreciate it. We're supposed to not know, supposed to be a secret election. So how do people know how I voted? Because you hear these things all the time about so many Hispanics voted for this guy, so many this voted for that guy. How do they know all that crap? So we need to go back to precinct voting where you walk in, they look your name up in the book, they hand you a ballot that has no traceable stuff on it. You vote, put it in the box. Now you voted. They know who you are. Secure election. What's wrong with doing that? And I'm not against the jail. I don't, I've never been out to the jail. I've never met Sheriff Daniels or any of the people. But I do honor our police. I served. So thank you.
And the next speaker is Ronald Moan, or Mowen. And he can tell us how to say his name. But thank you, Ronald.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members, I'm speaking today on the subject of Miracle Valley Bible College property. It appears there may be some confusion about the status of the property and I'd like to provide some clarity. The Miracle Valley Bible property has been declared to be a national historic site. In so doing, according to Arizona Statute forty-one dash eight sixty-two, it is no longer legal to allow the property to be substantially altered. The methodology of asbestos abatement will certainly cause excessive harm to occur. Secession of any such alteration would be best to serve the property. According to Statute forty-one eight sixty-two, it is now illegal to demolish any of the buildings on the property. According to that same statute, it is now required that the property does not deteriorate significantly. This means that the historic mural located in the tabernacle will be protected from any deterioration brought on by the upcoming monsoon season. I would like to call on the board of supervisors to act in the observance of the law by banning Dan Coxworth from any further detrimental destruction, that the historic Miracle Valley Bible College property be sold without any asbestos abatement or with any further destruction being carried out. I'm also calling on the board of supervisors to exercise fiscal responsibility with voter tax dollars by calling off any asbestos abatement. This expense is likely to exceed any funds recuperation that would be hoped for by the property sale and auction. In conclusion, the historic Miracle Valley Bible College property, having been established by A A Allen, is now under the threat of illegal demolition. The property of, of unnecessary, excuse me, the probability of unnecessary high-cost expenditures. These expenditures that would exceed the overall financial value of the property makes the destruction appear more of a doom, a boondoggle than a viable way to spend voting taxpayers' dollars. I'm a citizen of Cochise County. That you observe, I ask as a citizen of Cochise County, that you, that you observe the law as is presented by Arizona Statute forty-one eight sixty-two. By preserving the miracle, this historic Miracle Valley Bible College, I ask that you stop any further destruction. Thank you very much, y'all. Good to see you, Tom.
Our next speaker is, it's kind of blocked out here, Kim Moss, the last name of the Ma- No, Moan. Kim Moan. Kim Moan. It has highlighter on it and it makes it hard to read. I could see it in the Gmail address, so.
I'm Kim Moan from Hereford, Arizona. I stand here with you in support of Law forty-one eighty-two. The Miracle Valley property now has a very new destiny. The ship of destination means not for demolition. This will serve us all and you do not have to worry about asbestos. This will serve all of us and you do not have to worry about asbestos. Thank you. I understand your reservation about this unique situation. So I respectfully ask your consideration about the historic Miracle Valley preservation. It was given to God and it is, it is his, so the property can stand as is. I stand here with you in support of Law forty-one eight six two. This historic property now has a very new destiny. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rachel Waterbury from Sierra Vista. I'm a real estate agent with Keller Williams, Southern Arizona. My first time here. Thank you for having me. Um, I just came to speak on behalf of the Miracle Valley Bible College and also for, um, standing with Rebecca Allen Jones, the great granddaughter of A A Allen, who started the Bible college. And I just want to speak to the side of how, if they get this property, they would be contributing to the, um, economic betterment of the Miracle Valley, Hereford area, and, um, the improvements that are anticipated with the vision and the dreams that they have. So, um, I've been in the tourism arena for some time with, we lived in Iowa for about twenty years and we did a bed and breakfast there. And we did, um, when we came here, we also have been in the, um, vacation rental business as well as real estate. And I can just envision a lot of really wonderful things happening at the property. So I'm just letting you know I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Um, I do need to make a, or check for clarification. The people who signed up for item number two have all changed. Do I still have some where that are left for just item number two?
I want to talk about.
Have they all changed? Okay. Well, let's, let's see what.
And I believe the only person that submitted that didn't change or did get an opportunity to speak is Jeff Sturgis. And he put it in twice.
Okay, then he has had a chance to speak. Okay. So would it be advisable to continue through? Because no one is specifically signed up for item number two at this point. Because you did correct the one. You did contact the lady that was.
I would like to point out that I didn't speak on that issue. And I would like to speak on this issue.
And so, have one moment, have one moment, Madam Chair.
I know. I still have some. I'm just in a.
And Madam Chair, if that, if that agenda item is moved from consent agenda, then we can address Mr. Sturgis again. However, agenda items that are on consent and if we get speaker request forms, uh, they are not allowed to speak.
I'm cheering forward with call to the public though still. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because there are some that now they're starting to get muddy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is Ronald Brooks. Says he's on Teams.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, Mr. Brooks is on Teams. If he presses star six, he can unmute himself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, good morning, Board Supervisors, Tom Crosby, Ann English and Chair Peggy Judd. My name's Ron Brooks. I reside at six forty-seven South Ochica Street in Precinct Number One Benson, District Three of Cochise County. Um, I want to comment, uh, I heard a lot of good speakers from Miracle Valley. That was interesting. I'm speaking out against item number two, the acknowledgement of the receipt of County Jail District Board of Directors submission to you today. This item should have never been presented to the voters in an all-mail election. Uh, the bill has loads of slush money built into it and two-thirds of the districts have seen, have seen this and voted no to it. This bill needs to be rewritten. This bill will affect local business sales with higher taxes as many will go to Tucson for lower prices. Also, last December, our state Congress requires a super majority of sixty percent voter approval for any tax increase. This is a special interest bill. If you approve this receipt, you are misrepresenting your constituents in Cochise County, of which many of the people I've talked to did not want this. Um, I ask you to either table this or, um, change the language in the bill and rewrite it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Robert McCormick.
Yeah, I'm Robert McCormick from Sierra Vista. And I just want to agree with all the people that have spoke about this item number two. It was definitely a ramrodded, uh, uh, bill that went through. It was definitely a ramrodded bill that went through and I think you should definitely vote no. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joseph Patterson. Just a reminder that we are not speaking about item number two. This is called to the public, so it's not about anything on the agenda. And I, in error, I let him go ahead with that, so.
My name is Joseph Patterson from Sierra Vista, Arizona. And first of all, I would like to congratulate Ms. Judd on her new position. Glad to see you sitting there. I think your efforts in spearheading the drive for voter integrity have been instrumental in placing you in that position right now. And I, we all hope and pray that your fight to preserve voter integrity, restore voter integrity and confidence will continue. And then your new position, you have, you're the person to do it. And I'd like to thank Ms. English too for years of service. And though we probably disagreed on everything, but, just kidding, Adam. But like to thank you for your service. I agree with a lot of the points that have been made here. It's been an excellent discussion this morning. In my viewpoint, this isn't about the, whether we need a new jail or improvements or whatever, or anything else. It's all about process and election integrity. Oh, I had those that word again, election integrity. And in my research, I discovered a couple of things I wasn't aware of. One, Arizona is a pretty great place to be. Arizona has always been very, very upfront and protective of its citizens when it comes to tax. Tax legislation is treated totally different than any other legislation. In nineteen ninety-two, Proposition one oh four was passed. That made, that required the legislature to pass any bill that would affect taxing us would require a two-thirds vote to do that. And that's when we didn't have machines. Two-thirds. This Proposition one thirty-two this year was an extension of, of that very principle. We're not the people, it would require a sixty percent majority of those voting to pass any new tax initiative. Sixty percent. So we're dealing with two-thirds, sixty percent. And that's, to me, that screams out, this is who Arizona was. And this is what, who Arizona deserves, should remain. We should be very, very, very careful in promoting any new tax issues. And if enough people.
The next speaker is Joe Sels, Selsso.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I live at one zero five two two South Dove Song Lane in Palominas and my property borders the south and east side of the Miracle Valley Bible College. I attended the last work session you had where you discussed how to perceive the property to prepare for sale. I was somewhat dismayed to hear you are thinking of discontinuing the demolition and selling as is. I believe if you do it, it'll be worth less than if the property was cleared of all the dilapidated and nonusable structures. My wife and I have lived next to this property for twenty-eight years and have seen numerous owners come and go with little to no progress and bringing it up to code depending on contributions to do so. I believe the group that is interested in keeping everything as is and hoping to purchase and restore will also fail without proper funding to begin with. As with previous owners, depending on voluntary contributions is not an ideal way to go. So my suggestion for the Board of Supervisors is to ascertain that this group does or does not have the funds to proceed with making a final, before making your final decision. For your information, one of the previous owners has a website for the college still up and running, accepting donations to, though he has not occupied the facility for almost fifteen years. That's fraud. Our request to the board is to please do not allow those of us living in close proximity to the facility to have to live with these conditions any longer and to make the right decisions for everyone, not to just a select group that do not represent us. And I can tell you the dome on that Bible college, according to Border Patrol and us who live there, is a navigation point for all the illegal crossers that are coming up right through our property. And right now they're using that facility as a place to wait for being picked up to driven, be driven away. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Troll. This was one we did verify was called to the public. I believe. Did we verify? Okay.
Hello, Sandy Troll from Sierra Vista, Arizona. I want to ask that you not accept the receipt of the canvas for the jail tax election. The election was illegal. Tabulating machines are uncerifiable. The wrong pens were used. The all-mail-in was approved by the board after it was published. The election system is broken. We will keep showing up here until you address our concerns. And I have a quote. "The secret of freedom lies in educating people, whereas the secret of tyranny is in keeping them ignorant." Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And we could have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve agenda items one through four.
I would like to remove item number two.
So we're going to remove item number two. Can you revise the motion?
Are you removing item number?
Yes. I guess.
Are you removing or moving?
We are going to remove. I'm not moving. We're going to remove item number two.
Completely.
From the consent agenda.
From the whole.
And move it to the regular agenda. That was what you were asking. Okay.
Is there a motion to do that?
I move that the agenda item number two be removed from the consent agenda and be placed on the regular agenda.
I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think we need a motion or a second. I think it just happens that.
There, there doesn't need to be a motion or a second, but it's under the discretion of the chair.
I'm, I'm choosing to remove item number two then.
Then I move that we approve agenda items one.
And move to regular agenda.
Three and four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the motion carries. Now we will address item number two. I do have speakers on that, but before, can we have an explanation by the county administrator?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. According to Arizona revised Statute sixteen dash six four sixty requires that certified permanent copy of the official canvas for all offices and ballot measures in a city or town election shall be filed with the appropriate city or town clerk or in a special district election with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors who shall maintain and preserve it as a permanent record or permanent public record. So the canvas and certification has already been completed by the jail district board. Now it's simply the filing of the certified permanent copy. So that's what's on and noticed. So it's the receipt from the Cochise County Jail District Board of a certified copy to the clerk of the board. So we'd ask that comments be specifically regarding the receipt of the certification.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair.
It sounded like from what you said, I haven't read that ARS section. I believe you said sixteen six four six D is in dog. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Now, I didn't hear where it said that it had to come before the board. It just had to go to the, to the clerk. And I don't have any problem with the way it's laid out. It's a little, it's a little strange. Why is it coming before the board instead of just going to Mr. Maddox only?
So we clarified with the county attorney's office and we always want to be open and transparent with all the processes. So the board, jail district board did approve and certify the canvas. So the next step is now the receipt of it. So to be open and transparent with the process and to go in front of the board, because the board has to approve the acceptance of the receipt.
Okay, just for future reference, it would have been better if it wasn't on the consent agenda in, in that regard of transparency, because I usually see something on the agenda or the consent agenda as something that wants to get greased. And I don't, I don't, that's why I have frequently removed them. However, why is this? What form will this agenda item take in the future as we move forward? What, what meeting will we see it again? Not the acceptance, but will it be presented to the Board of Supervisors as accepting or certifying the canvas?
No, the, the jail district board has already done that.
Okay, so it'll never come before the board again?
Correct. The next, the next time, any issues regarding the jail district, it'll go in front of the jail district board and it'll be noticed. And that would be June thirteenth.
For the budget. Please repeat that.
So the next opportunity to meet about the jail district would be the jail district budget and all our budgets on June thirteenth.
Okay, so there won't be a separate item presented to the Board of Supervisors labeled accepting or certifying the canvas?
That's correct.
I see.
Madam Chair, I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the Cochise County Jail District Board of Directors of a certified copy of the official canvas of the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three election and order it to be filed with the clerk of the boards.
Second.
Madam Chair, we do have Jeff Sturgis.
Yep, and I've heard the comment.
And I, I'm going to call for the, those who have asked to speak on this item. And the ones that removed yourself from this item to call to the public, I may not be calling. I only have three that are left that are just specifically on this item. One is Jeff Sturgis.
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
During the jail district board of directors meeting of May thirty-fifth, the board was required to accept the election results certified and submitted by the Cochise County Elections Department as the official canvas for the special election held on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The agenda information stated that if the board did not accept the election results, and I quote, "The Cochise County Jail District will not be in compliance with state statute for certifying election results." Supervisor Tom Crosby voted not to accept the results. What consequence will he face for voting to not be in compliance with the state statute for certifying elections? Tom Crosby also earlier refused to comply with the Superior Court Judge's order to certify the twenty twenty-two election. What consequence will Tom Crosby face for these refusals? What consequences will Tom Crosby face for any future refusals to comply with the law? Today's agenda information states that the consequences of the board not acknowledging the receipt of a certified copy of the official canvas, the county will be in non-compliance with ARS sixteen six forty-two and sixteen six four six. How could Tom Crosby vote for acknowledging the receipt when he earlier voted not to certify the canvas? Will he once again show his contempt for the rule of law? Ordinary Cochise County citizens are expected to comply with state laws and court orders. So when will Tom Crosby face the consequences for his seemingly unlawful actions? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Nancy Olmstead. Okay, our next speaker is Paul Varble. Okay, that's, that's kind of how I thought this was going to go. All right.
If I, if I may, regarding Supervisor Crosby's original question, can I give another statute section maybe to clarify?
Yes, please.
So sixteen dash six four two B states, "The governing body of the special district, as defined in Title forty-eight, shall present to the Board of Supervised a certified copy of the official canvas of the election at the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors." So that's why we're here. Hopefully that clarifies the issue.
Okay.
I just wanted to get that clarified. I do have additional comments. "My oath means what it says. The U.S. Constitution is first. I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and the laws of state, of the state of Arizona." The Arizona Constitution, second, which says, Section three A. "The Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land to which all government, state and federal, is subject." So I'm just going to go over my, my notes from the last time we spoke. On January twenty-fourth this year, I voted no on the issue of amending the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-nine to approve this jail tax election to be an all-mail-in ballot election. That was because it had already been published in the paper before approval of the Board of Supervisors. Therefore, adoption of that process violated the due process laid out for the matter in, in the Constitution. And although there may be bureaucrats or attorneys that may provide some level of plausible deniability or even legality, I don't find that to be so. And I'm going to go with the U.S. Constitution, quoting from the Fifth Amendment, "Nor be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due press, process of law." And the Fourteenth Amendment, "Even the most nominal student of history should know what the Fourteenth Amendment is all about." "Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." And I believe the process approved by the board, January twenty-fourth, violated that process. And prior to the last meeting, Ms. Olmstead presented on the accurate presentation of my comments. Thank you.
And we have a motion in a second. I'm going to call for the vote now. There are no other comments. Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm going to vote aye. Is there any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. The motion carries with two and two votes and one abstaining. That was item number two. We are now on item number five, which is a public hearing. Can I have someone read the motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a Series Six bar new liquor license application submitted by Kevin Crambler and Joseph Lewis with a twisted spoke bar and grill located at seventeen ninety-four West Newell Street, Naco, Arizona, eight five six two zero.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I do need an explanation by Tim Maddox, clerk of the board.
Madam Chair and members of the board, this public hearing item is for an application, a liquor license application for a Series Six bar liquor license. The application has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. The Health Department is working with the applicant on proper permitting, property taxes for the parcel or current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the one hundred dollar processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
Okay, now I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here or online that would like to speak to this liquor license application? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing and I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the chair votes aye and the motion carries. Our next item is an action item, the county sheriff, number, item number six.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, A.C.J.C., drug, gang, and violent criminal control grant agreement, D.C. two four dash zero zero three to the Cochise County Sheriff's Office to fund the Special Operations Division overtime and employee rate-related expenses, E.R.D.s, related to its narcotics and smuggling investigations in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eleven cents effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
And we have Lieutenant Sean Chiganto to explain this to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a recurring grant from A.C.J.C., Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. We also refer to it as a burn grant. The dollar amount hasn't changed since last year. The, the total amount is one thirty-one, eight eighty-three, eleven. It pays for just our overtime and fringe benefits for our, primarily our Special Operations Division folks that are going after narcotics, gangs, and violent crimes in the county. Going after these type of crimes requires a lot of overtime because it's not something we can typically plan. We're very reactive to the. We're very reactive to the criminal element and we need to be flexible, which our standard work week really doesn't allow us to be. These funds allow us to, to have that flexibility and attack those type of criminal activities.
And this, this is our, you say Special Operations Division, you're, you're more trained, highly trained individuals doing just that work?
Correct. So these are our, our narcotics detectives, crime detectives, major crime detectives. Yes, those that typically have more tenure with the agency, have special training and experience.
Because we talk a lot about the Stone Garden funding and when we cover E.R.E.s for those and worry that some of our entry level officers are doing lots of overtime and getting tired. This is a whole different division and I just wanted to bring that out and, and make sure.
Yes.
I mean, these guys get tired too, I understand, but we appreciate your, that you're there doing that work.
Yeah, there's plenty of work to go around. I don't want to say it's exclusively Special Operations because sometimes you do use some patrol folks, but probably seventy-five percent of the time it's Special Operations.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
All right.
It talks about the total amount being a hundred and thirty-one thousand and some dollars. But it doesn't pay for any of the employee-related expenses, the E.R.E.s. Where does that money come from, the thirty-some thousand?
It does cover fringe, which is the E.R.E. expenses. It does have that built into it.
It said it was a county expense.
Oh, there is a, sorry, there is a matching portion that is paid for out of what's referred to either the, the Prop two oh seven, the marijuana money of roughly thirty-two thousand dollars. So we do have a matching portion, but they do cover E.R.E.s.
So.
Madam Chair, or excuse me, Madam English, it might be noteworthy that the E.R.E.s, as, as it says, are the employees' contribution. And in the case of the pension funds, that is, that is separate from the taxpayers' contribution to the system, you may recall.
Great. Are there any other questions or discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Development Services, that's item number seven, if we could have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-three fourteen, authorizing the adoption of an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation guidelines in relation to twenty twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Funds for an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation activity.
And we have Susan Bronson, planner at the county, and if, and I'm excited to hear about this, so.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I didn't catch if there was a second to the motion.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. As a refresher, the CDBG program is a federal program and administered by the state, the Arizona Department of Housing. The eligible project types include housing, public facilities, and planning. At a previous public hearing, the Board of Supervisors approved the owner-occupied housing program as its chosen CDBG project. Cochise County will receive approximately four hundred and ninety-eight thousand for this project. And as part of the process, we're required to pass housing guidelines that's required by the state. So we have given you a draft of the housing guidelines to review. Some of the key provisions include eligibility requirements, grants and forgivable loan requirements, income qualification, types of rehabilitation, application process, work write-up, procurement, and acceptance of the work. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
I already said how I feel I'm excited about this because I oftentimes see people, especially now when everything costs so much, struggling to replace a water heater or air conditioner or things. And, and I see this as a really good way to address those issues, especially with our, some of our homeowners don't have a lot of money. So I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. We've been receiving some interest already.
Oh, good. Okay. And so I just wanted to ask, how are you promoting this? You know, what, what's our role possibly? Where can the information be found?
Because the state administers the program, we have to very strictly follow the state requirements. So we're, we're applying, excuse me, we're complying with it step by step. And we have to have these housing guidelines approved before we can even submit an application for the release of the funds.
Okay.
So at, at this point, we're hoping to have these approved and then we'll be preparing our environmental information that we'll be sending to the state and then the application, and then the state can release the funds. And then at that point, we plan to advertise as widely as we can. We can advertise on our website. We can advertise on other jurisdictions within Cochise County, the towns and cities that are eligible. We're hoping to advertise on their websites, community organizations, churches. We're just hoping to get out the word broadly, countywide.
Thank you. And I just kind of wanted to hear how that would come about because I know people are listening in the audience thinking, well, you know, how can I access that?
Yes, and just to clarify, because we are receiving calls for people interested in the program. We're not able to accept applications yet because, again, we have to follow the state process.
But it will come up on everybody's websites and in communities.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Bronson, have you heard about a rehabilitation project having to do with a shared water system on Dakota and Hargis by any chance?
I have not heard about that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Let me ask you this. Would such, let's say you got a, you got a, a community well and it's serving six houses or something like that. Would, would this CDBG grant have anything to do with the shared water system?
Are you asking, for example, they need improvements to the shared well?
Yeah, because, you know, let's say five of them think the sixth person, their, their water, their part of the water system leaks, causing waste of water and electricity, for instance.
Well, the applicants would have to be income qualified, first of all. They would also have to have lived in their homes for a year and they'd have to submit documentation of their income. Assuming that they qualify, they're income qualified, then the process would be a building inspector and the energy auditor would go out to the site and would develop a scope of work. And if it were deemed appropriate and feasible by the building inspector and by the energy auditor, then that work could conceivably be done.
Do you know who the energy auditor works for?
The energy auditor will be me, and so I work for Development Services.
Yes, we work for the county. Well, thank you, Ms. Bronson. Is there any other discussion?
No, just a comment. I, I think it's really important that we have all these processes in place because when people are starting to ask, such as the questions Tom's asking now, you can't answer them unless you have this in place. So today we're putting together the provisions so that when people do ask, you have the ability to answer those questions.
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote now. All those in favor say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye and the motion is, carries unanimous. Okay, our next item number eight, if we could have a motion on that, and it is Ms. Watkins. Go ahead and come forward.
Madam Chair, I move we approve intergovernmental agreement, I.G. two-three dash zero 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 nine two one two dash one, Mosen Road, State Route ninety, Hereford Road, between Arizona Department of Transportation, A.D., and Cochise County to administer to the design of Mosen Road corridor from State Route ninety to Hereford Road in the total amount of one million, ninety thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars effective upon signing through project completion and authorize the county cost share of ninety thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we are ready for your, your, or your presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the boards. This is the next phase of Mosen Road. The Serviced NPO did a concept study so that we know how many lanes to build and where we would have turn lanes and through lanes and improving the drainage. And so this is a grant by, from the Serviced NPO to do the design phase. Then once the design phase is completed, we would acquire the right of way that we don't have perfected and start phasing in the construction of the project.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Just a comment. Mosen Road has needed a study and an upgrade for a long time because it's, it's getting to be quite a collector road. And so when someone's offering us a million dollars, I think that it's incumbent upon us in order to pay our share to get the study done so that it will be done appropriately for the Serviced area.
And, and I just want to, they have been involved in the, the planning of this and, and, and watched over it on the, on the Serviced NPO. And I, I believe that this is a long, hard battle that you've fought. And I want to say thank you because, because our county has needed this improvement for a while and it, it is exciting to be able to vote, to bring that to fruition. So thank you for your presentation.
Which is, I, I'm on Mosen Road and, and Hereford Road all the time coming here. And I, I hardly think that the county could do a better job maintaining those roads. And I know that you have a lot to do and you're very busy.
Okay, so hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries unanimously. Item number nine. I need a motion on that one. And thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a memorandum of understanding between the Arizona Prevention Research Center Community Action Board and Cochise Health and Social Services to express commitment to address health issues in the U.S.-Mexico border region, Arizona and beyond, effective upon a signing for a period of five years.
Second.
Okay, we'll have a presentation by Alicia Thompson, our health director.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Arizona Prevention Research Center team and the Arizona Prevention Center Community Action Board members combine collaborative efforts to address the social and structural determinants of health in the U.S.-Mexico border region, Arizona and beyond. As a CAB member, Cochise Health and Social Services, and by signing this MOU, the Health Department expresses its commitment to uphold the ten guiding principles, the operating principles, and following the orientation handbook used to onboard and maintain members. This MOU is a voluntary agreement among each of the MOU partnerships. By signing this MOU, we are acknowledging that we are partners in the development of the mission to champion for optimal health and well-being in our diverse communities of the U.S.-Mexico border region. And it serves to establish mutually agreeable diversity and inclusion efforts and protocols for research.
That was a lot. A lot more than was here. So just for the, the public and for the meeting clarification, what you said as a CAB member?
CAB.
CAB member. That's the Community Action Board?
Yes.
Okay. And is that who's involved? It involves the community centers. So that's who's involved in putting up the, the small regional community centers. And I have one in my district.
It's, it's more about the Community Health Worker Network that has been established throughout. Well, we've done a really amazing job of establishing a community health.
Like Chiracaua Community.
Yes, and Penal Hispanic Council and Winchester Heights and all of the partners, our, our community health workers that outreach to the unhoused population. I mean, all, all of that, they all attend this Community Action Board.
Okay. I think I've actually attended one of those or two myself. So I just wanted to kind of figure out who that was, if that's what I was thinking. All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Is there any other questions?
I have a couple of comments and questions. Dr. Thompson, you mentioned, I believe you said, Arizona and beyond. What did you mean by beyond?
Well, I am actually not the person that was supposed to present today. That would be Beth Robinson, and she is actually over this program. I am not. I don't attend the CAB meetings. And so I am not able to answer that question.
So would the same go for what is the U.S.-Mexico border region?
For Arizona, it's all the counties that actually are next to the border. So it's Cochise, Santa Cruz, Pima, Maricopa.
You, you started out saying for Arizona, Arizona such and such, these counties. Is there any other places that, that you would include in the U.S.-Mexico border region besides the border counties of Arizona?
I can't speak to this group and what they, how they define it. You would need to ask them. I don't know.
Well, they're not here, obviously. Okay, what, in part of this, it says, what are agreeable, this is a question. What are agreeable diversity and inclusion efforts?
Again, I would be able to tell you what I believe they are. But unfortunately, the person that could answer the question with absolute clarity is not able to be here today.
That's fine. How about this? What are social determinants of health?
Oh, I could speak to that.
Okay.
So social determinants or health of health are the places, when you look at the places that we work, live, play, and worship. It's like if you were to look at the differences between ability to go out for a long walk in the evening in the Hereford community. There's not many people that do that because there's no sidewalks, there's no street lighting, there's not safe places to walk. You're always a little bit afraid of the javelina and the coyotes and the rattlesnakes and everything else. And so when you look at the comparison of the walkability of Hereford to the walkability of Sierra Vista, you're going to see that Sierra Vista has a much higher walkability score because they have sidewalks, they have lighting, they have safe places to walk. And just that one social determinant of health, which is walkability of where you live, will, is an indicator of how healthy the people that live in those regions, the how their chances of being healthy. And many, many research studies have resulted in identifying that your social determinants of health, whether or not you have a community center, whether you have places to gather, you're, do you have places to worship? What is the structure? Are your playgrounds safe? Do you even have playgrounds? I haven't seen a single one in Hereford. I live in Hereford and I haven't seen a single playground in Hereford. So it's like, again, all of those are considered social determinants of health. And if you have a really rich environment where people have the ability to get out and play, they can walk to work, they can walk to a grocery store, they have the ability to be, live a healthy, active life, their likelihood of living longer increases dramatically.
That's very interesting. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. One other subject, capacity building, and the subject is health disparities at the U.S.-Mexico border and the desire to increase capacity for all partners. Could you tell us what that is about?
Well, we have the Health Disparities Grant, which was approved and which we have been able to support community partners like Penal Hispanic Council, Chiracaua, AZ Chow, Winchester Heights, I believe there's seven of them, that have hired and brought on community health workers. And that's, we're, we're proud of the work we've done, but it's not nearly enough to meet the need in our community. And so basically they're talking about, you know, all, almost all of our community health workers are now certified community health workers, which means we can bill for their services and get reimbursement for the, what they're doing to help people they interact with to be healthier. And what we're hoping to do is expand through, and make it sustainable without a grant throughout, through the county and be able to build the Community Health Worker Network. Because, again, it's been proven through research that if people have someone that they can relate to and can help them to navigate through accessing the healthcare or other needs, like they don't have enough. or other needs, like they don't have enough food to eat. How, someone that can help them figure out, how do you even go to the food bank? How do you even get food from the food bank? I mean, there's, it's pretty amazing how challenging life is to navigate for many people in our county. And having someone that they can trust, like a community health worker who has lived experience, tremendously helps them to get the, their needs met.
Thank you for that thorough discussion, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. And I, I see this as a benefit, and I was excited to hear that we have many, many trained community health workers now. Because I remember when community health workers would come for certain projects in my community, they were coming from Tucson.
Yes.
They lived in Tucson, they were community health workers, they were our community health worker, but they lived in Tucson. And so ours, I assume, are right here on the ground in our communities. And that is very exciting. Thank you.
It is.
I think it's important that we realize that this is not an organization that hires people. It's a place for our people to discuss issues with other organizations only. You know, so there's no cost involved. It's, it's a matter of sharing information only.
Yes, networking.
Yes.
And learning.
All right. Yeah, that's, is there any more discussion? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I am going to vote aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have two ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we have item number ten now. Need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve contract twenty-three, dash, sixteen, dash, H E A, dash, oh, one. A marketing campaign for Cochise County between Inetum Health and Cochise Health and Social Services in the amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars effective May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Now, this one you are assigned to explain, so.
Yes.
I'm excited.
Yes. So, this actually is a marketing campaign for Cochise, the Health Department. And it is the result of the IGA, which is the Vaccine Equity Grant that you've approved, you accepted. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's already been accepted. And this piece of the, the work plan was part of that IGA. And so we're engaging this company called Anishim. It's, I had to learn how to say it too. It's, it's not intuitive. But we engaged them and their goal is to increase the acceptance of the COVID-19 vaccination among racial and ethnic minority groups. And Anishim will develop materials in collaboration with our community partners, pretty much the same people that I've already listed on the previous agenda item, and develop culturally relevant educational materials that will be shared with all Cochise partners. The really cool thing about this is that while there has to be this COVID-19 vaccination nexus and with our targeted population, we also will be able to have the ability to market all of the surfaces that we provide to our community members through the Health Department. And which is very exciting because there are still a lot of people that don't know that, about the services that we provide. Like, for example, someone that is trying to quit smoking, quit tobacco. They, they might not even know that the Health Department has a program that can help them with that. And so we're, we're excited about it. This is, was the result of the RFP process and it was followed and Anishim Health was the successful bidder.
I, yeah, I was, I was not going to say this during this meeting. I'm still not very excited about a vaccine that they say is safe and effective when possibly, it isn't even approved yet as a, you know, is not approved by the FDA yet. I guess that will come up and that will be marketed as well when it is approved by the FDA. I think that should be part of it. I, I do love that we will market our services. I think that's really important because I do believe our Health Department facilities are highly underutilized. They're very quiet. People don't take their kids for shots there anymore because the insurance pays for it, the doctors, you know, do that. So, I, I just, I find the marketing part intriguing. I struggle with, with the vaccine part. I just struggle. So, you're gonna hear that from me and then I'm gonna vote the way I vote. But I appreciate you taking my opinions and my thoughts and there's just so much out there and I don't want it, that to be part of the discussion. I wasn't even going to bring it up. So, does anyone else have a, well?
Madam Chair, can I say one more thing? I want to bring your awareness to the impact of not approving this because we have accepted this contract with ADHS and this is part of what we, we said we would do. So, just want to make.
I'm focusing on the other part.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Please let me focus where I need to focus.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other comments on this?
I have a question.
Questions?
What does culturally relevant mean?
Well, I would be hard pressed if I was to try to read a flyer in Spanish. But someone that is not proficient with English, they would have a hard time reading something in English. And so really, it's looking at what is appropriate. And we have many, many residents, citizens of the United States in Cochise County that English is not their preferred language. And so making sure that we make, create materials that are culturally relevant. Here's a prime example. It comes from my dental background. Hey, we have the Tooth Fairy. In the Hispanic community, they have like a tooth rat. I don't, I don't really, I, I don't know his name, but, but it's, it's like the Tooth Fairy, but it's a rat.
Does it bring any money?
Uh, yeah.
It does bring money.
Yeah, it does bring money. Yeah, so it's like the same thing, but if you talked about the Tooth Fairy to a Hispanic family that was deeply culturally Hispanic, they wouldn't know what you were talking about. But you talk about the Tooth Rat and they do. And so that's what culturally appropriate messaging means.
Okay, that's fine. I don't know that it necessarily has anything to do with this grant, but I understand what you're saying. What is the ratio of bilingual employees that the Health Department has, if you happen to know?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but it's pretty high.
Okay. Uh, let's see. I, I saw a reference to vaccination in this marketing campaign and my platform is to get the county out of the vaccine business and because of adverse reactions. And I believe that we should minimize our interference with market economics having to do with medical care.
I am hearing no more comments. I've been to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair is going to vote aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have two votes in affirmative. Motion carries. Item number eleven, we need a motion for that.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consulting services agreement between Governmental Leadership Solutions and Cochise Health and Social Services, C H S S, for a gap analysis and the completion of a strategic plan for C H S S in the amount of one hundred thou, one hundred four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars effective June sixth, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Ms. Thompson? Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. This service agreement is the result of the Workforce Development Grant portion of IGA CTR zero, five, five, two, zero, seven. So, Governmental Solutions is going to help guide us through the strategic planning process for our department. They include a comprehensive analysis of our COVID-19 response and a thorough gap analysis to identify how our response could have been done better. The resulting strategic plan will help us to strategically work toward being a stronger Health Department on behalf of the community members in Cochise County and for responding to future public health emergencies. And as I mentioned, public health emergency preparedness was pre, was originated in two thousand and five after we experienced the, uh, man, my brain just blanked.
COVID?
No, no.
Oh, two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five.
Flew.
No, when the planes flew into the.
Oh, nine eleven.
Nine eleven. Sorry.
Seemed like a health emergency. It was an everything emergency.
Yeah.
It was everything emergency.
And that was, that was why our, our capability to respond to public health emergencies was greatly expanded at that time. Because what we learned through nine eleven is that we weren't ready. We were not ready to respond to public health emergencies. So, regardless of how anybody feels about the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to respond to it in using our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Response Function as a Health Department. And so, that's one of the things that we really need to do with this opportunity is identify how we could have done better. Basically, do a thorough after-action analysis of our response and then work towards being a stronger Health Department for responding to future public health emergencies. It will also help us to meet accreditation standards. And one of the goals continues to be to become an accreditation-ready Health Department. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have comments.
Okay.
Which is, in my opinion, economic laws are like the laws of physics. People will pay for what goods and services are worth, talking about market economics. The demand for, quote, something for nothing instantly exceeds supply. The next best thing to something for nothing is a subsidy, tax break, or other incentive. And no recipient ever wants that to end. And hence my previous mention of increased capacity of all partners. And you end up with what I would refer to as taxation perpetual motion if you are going to have a, a marketing campaign and so forth. Therefore, subsidies increase the price of goods and services if you are assuming that the demand for something for nothing instantly de, uh, exceeds supply and people will pay for what goods and services are worth. Therefore, they are inflationary and hurt the lower economic recipients the most.
I think this is about a strategic plan, which would include surveys and, and analysis of.
It's actually about providing us, it's kind of like how the Board of Supervisors have a strategic plan for the county. This will be the strategic plan.
And the last time that you had a strategic plan was two years back, like five?
We didn't have one when I got here.
Didn't even have a strategic plan. You were a little bit included in ours, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I remember there being some health stuff, but that was part of ours. Okay.
Yes.
And, and I feel like this is very important. And I imagine the focus will at some point be on food access, diabetes, things that are, that people think about in our community. So.
Yeah, that, that will be part of our community health needs assessment process. And so truly, the strategic plan is about how we move our Health Department forward. What you're speaking to is our community health needs assessment process. And that, that we also are working on, but it's a little bit different than what this is.
I think I was comparing to what I remembered in the board's strategic plan. Okay, so, all right.
I think it's important that we always look to how efficient we are. And, and that's what the Health Department is looking at in this strategic plan is looking for efficiency and the ability to do the work that they do in the best way possible. So, I, I think it's important for us to support this.
Right. Hearing no other comments?
I would just, I would just have to add, I would just have to add that I think that a, a gap analysis and completion of a strategic plan is extremely unlikely to suggest smaller government and, and, and less participation. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have passed this with a vote of two to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is state and federal legislation. And the state is still sleeping a little bit. Is there anything that you can report on, Madam English? Okay.
Nothing that you haven't read about.
Right. Okay, so, Mr. Karwatska, can you please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep my comments to the people in the room. So, today is Dr. Thomas.
Thompson.
Thompson. It's Thompson. Alicia Thompson.
So, I'm gonna talk about someone that's not in the room. Dr. Thompson, no, Alicia Thompson, doctor. So, I apologize. But I'm excited for you because today is your last board meeting. That is something that is, that is achievable. And I want people to recognize that it is achievable to have your last board meeting, so congratulations on that. Also, I just want to say, you know, people see these agenda items, but they don't see all the work to get here. So, all the countless emails, meetings, phone calls, paperwork to get to one position to bring to the board. So, thank you for approving the Health Department. Thank you for bringing in individuals to make the county better. And that's always the goal, is when you leave to make it better than when you came in. So, and you've done that. So, I appreciate that and appreciate you and good luck on your next adventure. Yes. Thank you. That completes my report.
Includes. Okay, District one, do you have a report of current events? District two?
No, it's English.
District three, yes, I have something. There's a lavender festival this weekend in Wilcox, in part of the wine country. And there's also a Cowboy Heritage Festival. This is their second year. It's on Railroad Avenue. It's Friday and Saturday. And I'm not sure about Sunday. Look it up, Cowboy has Western Heritage Festival. It is a part of our arts and theater program. And I know it'll be worth being there if you, if you'd like to take a trip to Wilcox. It is still beautiful there. We haven't even got close to a hundred yet. So, thank you. That's all I have. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Oh, the next meeting. Sorry. Next meeting will be today at one PM in the Board of Supervisors Earing Room for a work session with Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. This meeting is adjourned.